Signed up. And let's check in with Scott in Kona. Good morning, aloha. How are we doing there?
Good morning Chair. We have three testifiers in Kona today.
Okay, thank you Scott.
Thank you.
We'll check back with you. Let's see, Jeanette in Pohoa. Good morning, how are we doing there?
Good morning Mr. Chairman. We have three testifiers here.
Okay, thank you. Doni Waimea, good morning, how are we doing there?
Good morning Mr. Chair. We have no testifiers, thank you.
Thank you. Fortune in Oceanview, good morning. Aloha, how are we doing there?
Hi, this is Sandy. And Mr. Chairman, we have one testifier today.
Okay, thank you Sandy, my apologies.
Thank you. No problem.
Let's see, Dave, I don't see you on the screen. Dave, are you somewhere there?
I'm here, Chair Yoshimoto. We currently have three testifiers signed up and two are currently present.
Okay, I see your hat. Alrighty, thank you Dave. So we'll check back in with you there too as well. Okay, why don't we start here in Hilo. We're gonna call the first two testifiers and then we'll transition to Kona and take the additional sites after that. Here in Hilo, we have Sharon Toriano. Please come to the table as well as Police Chief Harry Kubo Jiri. Good morning. As a reminder, testifiers, you have three minutes per item. Let us know if you're having additional items, we can transition and reset the time for each item. Ms. Toriano, when you're ready, you can hit the lights.
Good morning Council members and thank you for allowing me this opportunity and privilege to address you this morning. I'm here specifically to address Communication 911, which is the appointment of Molly A. Stebbins as Corporation Counsel. It was a damper to tell me I only had three minutes, but I do realize you have many testifiers this morning, so I will keep it brief. For Human Resources, we've been very fortunate, and I can't emphasize that enough, very fortunate to have had Molly as our assigned Corporation Counsel. When I think of the qualities, and they're numerous, it's not just a matter of her legal acumen, it also has to do with her practical approach and her sound management recommendations. Molly is often challenged in representing not just our department but other departments and she's extremely adept at bringing parties together on issues that we may not always see eye to eye. And I can't thank her enough and we greatly appreciate her. I don't know if you have any questions for me, but I'll keep it brief and...
Okay, okay.
That's it.
Thank you Ms. Toriano.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. Chief Kubo Jiri?
Good morning Chair.
Oh, there you go.
Good morning Chair Yoshimoto, members of the County Council. I'm here in support of Molly Stebbins for appointment to Corporation Counsel. Several years ago, I was asked by her supervisor to... He had listed four categories... Was that me? (laughing) Excuse me, if that was me. Four categories to help him do an annual performance evaluation on Ms. Stebbins. And I thought I'd share the four categories and what I had informed her supervisor at the time. And I'll be brief. Under the subheading of Quality of Work, I had put down, "Ms. Stebbins consistently exudes exceptional professional competence and her work product always exceeds our expectations. While she has established a reputation for consistently offering comprehensive and analytical responses to our legal requests, her true value is that she provides her services in a timely fashion and there is meticulous attention to detail in her work product. She is responsive to all legal requests for advice and takes initiative to assist us in drafting responses to address the myriad of legal issues we face on a day-to-day basis. Her work product is always complete and thorough and she leaves nothing to chance. She constantly displays the utmost degree of accuracy and attentiveness in servicing the police department and thus is highly respected for her point of view. The exemplary quality of her work product, whether verbal or written, is steadfast and reassuring to both myself and staff. She has on more than several occasions apprised me of recent changes in labor, personnel, or contractual laws, thus mitigating unnecessary potential legal issues that would have surfaced had we not sought her legal opinion. Her meticulous attention to detail is highly respected not only by myself and staff but also with my law enforcement counterparts throughout the state, at the local, state, and federal levels, who have had the opportunity to meet and talk with Ms. Stebbins." Under the subheading of Quantity of Work, Ms. Stebbins is energetic and persevering in a professional relationship with the Hawaii Police Department. She is easily approachable, thus management and staff without hesitation feel comfortable in seeking her advice on complex legal matters. Ms. Stebbins meets monthly with myself and senior staff members to provide a legal perspective on various issues that involve personnel, administrative, document disclosures, firearms, contract reviews, MOUs, MOAs, along with a myriad of other legal issues. She possesses a proactive attitude when providing legal advice and never hesitates to research legal issues and provides me with a recommendation. And if I can just comment right on that, I think of everyone that personally knows Ms. Stebbins, she reaches the heck out of everything before she gets back to you and it's always in a timely fashion.
Chief, you have, your three minutes are up. You can please summarize.
Okay, sorry.[380.13][380.13](laughing) I've had the opportunity to work with Ms. Stebbins for the last four years and I fully support her appointment as Corporation Counsel. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Chief. Okay, here in Hilo, I can ask Donna Wardin to please come to the table. We're gonna be transitioning to Kona. Scott, your... Scott, you have three testifiers?
Yes, three testifiers today.
Okay, why don't we take all three of your testifiers, then we'll transfer to Pohoa.
Okay, our first testifier today would be Kathleen Wilson, in support of 423-14.
Aloha and good morning, Mr. Chair.
Aloha.
My name is Kathleen Wilson and I live full-time in Kailua, Kona. Today I'm here to support Resolution 423-14. It's the right thing to do for the area, the neighborhood, and the community. I do not profess to be an expert in Hawaii County Code, zoning, or archaeological studies. However, I do offer 30 years of expertise in long-range planning, strategic initiatives, and business development. These skills, when combined with old-fashioned common sense and deep respect for the land and people, support the expansion of a planned recreational area in an already densely populated area of Kailua, Kona. The proposed resolution confirms a balance between strategic development, cultural, educational opportunities for residents and guests of Kona. Five outliers support this decision. Perception: A simple search on the internet, typing in White Sands, Magic Sands, Ali'i Drive, page after page of rentals and condos, a subliminal and yet telling message of a densely populated area of housing and traffic. The addition of an expanded multipurpose park will showcase an area of an Ali'i Drive as a destination to enjoy. The park will encourage residents of Kona to once again come downtown and enjoy Ali'i. Parking and safety are still continued to be a top priority in this area. Thoughtful planning to anticipate future parking needs for those who visit Kapapa Park, Magic Sands, and La Aloa is encouraged. As the population of West Hawaii continues to grow, expansion is needed to ensure that Kapapa Park meets the needs of the community in the future. Outdoor recreation: Healthy activities such as cycling, jogging, and walking along Ali'i offer logistical challenges. By expanding the existing footprint to create a larger Malka side park, this will give families and outdoor enthusiasts additional space to participate in healthy activities away from a major thoroughfare. Green space: A natural buffer to an already densely populated area, the park is in its close proximity to multi-unit housing and will provide additional opportunities to enjoy nature and engage in educational and cultural activities. Expansion: Let us continue to emphasize the need for recreational and community gathering places, restoration, preservation, and interpretation of significant cultural sites, and a continued focus on lowering residential densities to attract visitors to the area. In closing, as we continue to implement strategic plans to increase our Malka Makai access routes between Ali'i and the highway, we are obligated to remain aware of and honor the protection of public access and open space on Ali'i Drive. I ask you to support and fund this resolution, as you supported and voted unanimously to approve Bill 149 to create Kapapa Park. Respectfully said.
Okay. Aloha, thank you for your testimony.
Okay, our next testifier is John Birch, in support of Communication 911, representing Chair of the Police Commission.
Good morning. My name is John Birch and I want to thank you for allowing me to testify this morning in support of Molly for Corporation Counsel. I also want to thank each of you for your continued service to the county. I know it's a tough job and you guys all do it very, very well. For the last 13 years, since, gosh, 2001, I have served the County of Hawaii, both on the Fire and Police Commissions, chairing both commissions. I've had the opportunity to work with numerous representatives from Corporation Counsel's office, including Molly. I met Molly in 2007, when she started with the Office of Corporation Counsel. She has represented the county during numerous meetings of both the Fire and Police Commission. Molly brings a fresh compassionate and non-defensive demeanor to the position and I strongly support her appointment. Mayor Canoe is a lawyer by trade and this unique qualification gives him a great gift to choose wisely. I support him, his nomination of Molly, and I hope you folks enjoy working with Molly as much as I do. I believe Molly is the right choice. Mahalo and if you have any questions, unweddy.
Thank you for your testimony.
Our next testifier is Janet Britt, in support of 423-14, representing Hawaiian Islands Land Trust itself.
Good morning Mr. Chairman, Council members, and audience. Mahalo for allowing me to visit with you today about Resolution 42314, the purchase of White Sands Malka. I strongly support this purchase. My name is Janet Britt. I am currently the Hawaii Island Director for the Hawaiian Islands Land Trust. An important part of our land trust mission in Hawaii is to encourage the preservation of open space, recreational areas, and historical and cultural sites. All of these attributes are present at White Sands Malka. The purchase of White Sands Malka is a project the Land Trust wholeheartedly supports and we applaud the Ponce Commission, Drew, and the other council members who are working to ensure this purchase occurs. The purchase of White Sands Malka would add to the existing park and would provide a much larger area for walking, excuse me, jogging and enjoying the outdoors. It would also protect significant historical and cultural sites, also a priority for the Land Trust. Additionally, I am a full-time resident living Malka White Sands in the Keahoe View subdivision and I am personally familiar with the tremendous amount of use that the White Sands Beach and adjacent areas receive from locals using the park for celebrations and picnics, to the thousands of visitors who pack the beach every year. I drive by White Sands every day and there is never a day that the area is not being enjoyed by many people. The purchase would benefit our residents, both young and old, it would benefit all of our visitors who enjoy this area, and it would provide a much-needed recreational area along Ali'i Drive. I strongly urge you to vote yes for the White Sands Malka Resolution. Mahalo for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, we're gonna transition to Pohoa. Jeanette, you have three testifiers as well?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, why don't you take your...
Testifier is Toby Hazel.
Toby Hazel.
She's signed up for four items on the agenda.
Okay, good morning Ms. Hazel.
Good morning. How are you doing? I want to talk about the 419, the 439, the 444, and I guess the Bill 257 is in there somewhere. And first I wanted to say again about the hot pond, is that I do not believe that we need to spend money on more land down there. We need bathrooms. The porta-potties that are down there are usually some kind of a mess. They've been burned down, I don't know how many times, and the smell actually reaches the pond many times with whatever they put into them, besides the human element. So, I mean, really, I'd much rather see, and I'm sure all the people that really frequently use that place would like to see the bathrooms done properly and changing rooms, rather than acquiring more lands from some individual owner down there. And the other thing about the bicycles, yes, we all want off-road safe bicycling. It isn't just the kids, the parents, the adults, the seniors, we all want to ride our bicycles around and get out of our cars. And so, having been, at one moment in time, the chairperson for the Park Committee, I have to say yet again, to coordinate these things, I mean, developing, what, $60 million at the Pohoa Park and we can't figure out how to have bike trails that run through the park to the other major places in the town, and we're gonna be, we're gonna have horrendous traffic once that roundabout starts. I don't even know if there's a bike lane in the roundabout or not. Didn't see it there. But, you know, getting away from the cars and being able to safely ride your bike to different destinations in the town is a priority, not just for kids. And the last thing, I'll be brief because I know how tedious this all gets going on and on, is this red ant thing. How much money is gonna go and disappear down a black hole with this red ants? Do you wear that red shirt on purpose? No. No. Okay, so anyhow, it could buy a lot of poison peanut butter, and that's what everybody seems to be using out here. So if you're gonna make a study, you need to have control, some one of the groups out here that's using all this poison peanut butter and figure out if it's working. You know, don't just gobble up money and disappear and we never hear from anybody again. You know, like this rat lung study that UH got millions of dollars for, what, two or three years ago? We've heard nothing. Nothing back from them. So anyhow, a little accountability would be nice, some planning, maybe it's time to amend the plan for the Pohoa Park to include the safe bicycling. I don't know who gets in charge of these things. If they would wake up, I'll be happy to talk with them too. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Hazel.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Our next speaker is Renee Cirque. Items on our agenda today.
Thank you. The first item I want to talk about is Reso 41914, which Toby Hazel just discussed, except I'm going to take the opposite opinion from her. Our county and especially the Puna District has grown 24.5% between one census and the next, and this, and Puna was always way behind in terms of infrastructure and level of citizens. We really have to be proactive and plan for our needs, our recreational and park needs for the future growth that we're gonna have. Now, the Public Access and Open Space Program, one of the main things it was designed for was to make it easy to acquire parcels adjacent to existing public facilities, so that those could be expanded to meet future population needs. And I think this is an exact example of that sort of thing. I agree with her about the porta-potties and the need to do something about that at the park, but this is a good opportunity for us to acquire that land right now, while we have a willing seller. The next thing I want to transition to is the Little Fly Ant, and there are two, it's 444 and 445 resolutions. I'm sort of unclear, they're both asking $400,000. I'm sort of unclear whether we're talking about a total of $800,000 or we're talking about... One is for, let's see, the 444 is for research. I cannot imagine Parks and Rec being able, having the competence or the skills or the personnel to do research. They can't even get the floors washed here at the community center more than once a There is no need to duplicate what's already happening because UH, Hilo, CTAR, has Dr. Arnold Tora, who's an entomologist, who I know is working on the Little Fly Ant issue, and the State Department of Agriculture is also working on it, they're both put out brochures to outreach to the community information about that, and they've both worked up some protocols for eradication. So I don't see what the need is to allocate what you request, $400,000 for research, which I believe the Department of Parks and Recreation is not competent to take care of. As far as eradication, the other, the other bill, that's 444, the other Reso, excuse me, 444, yes, I have no problem with giving them some money for eradication in our county parks. I believe that $400,000 is way too, excuse me, way too much for that. Considering the amount of money that the Invasive Species Council was appropriated by the state, if we give $800,000 to the Little Fly Ant on this island, there will hardly be any money left at all for any of the other invasive projects, of which we have way too many. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Jeanette, your next testifier?
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Our next testifier is John Olson, speaking in opposition to Bill 239.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I'm here speaking in opposition to this measure. It really leaves me quite upset that the Planning Director has introduced this measure. Probably as equally disturbing is the fact that it has gotten this far and found enough support to get this far in the council process. Without the completion of the general plan in a timely and professional manner, it severely degrades the community development plans that are attached to it. There is no integration. This is a process, yes, it is going to be time-consuming and it's going to require funding to get a substantive and professional outcome, but it's something that's absolutely necessary for this county to move forward. We're not going to have any significant economic development or social development here until we make the commitments to planning. The planning department needs to be a planning department, not simply a permitting department. Irrespective of what happens here today and what you choose to do, I think you will find this issue will be on the 2016 ballot as a referendum. Because there is significant commitment in the community to see to it that these development plans and the general plans to which they are attached move forward in a timely and professional manner. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you Mr. Olson. Okay, let's, let's see, transitioning to Kohala. Dave, you have three testifiers as well?
Yes, good morning Chair. We have three testifiers. Our first testifier is Lisa Andrews, representing herself and her family, speaking in support of Resolution 433.
Aloha Council. Mahalo for hearing our testimony. In regards to Roots Skateboard Park, this community would like to see this completed. It has sat incomplete for years. As soon as this project was started, the Keiki Kingdom Playground sustained less damage by kids acting out, getting too old for the playground. Years have gone by and kids have graduated that were at the groundbreaking and blessing of this park. They have still not seen this project completed. We really would like to see a healthy place for our kids to play and especially those that are not involved with organized sports. So, please, help us finish this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our next testifier is Sandra Bliss, representing herself and her family, speaking in support of Resolution 433.
Thank you. I am in support of the Roots Skate Park being completed and I think it is so important for the children, not only the children, but for all of the families in Kohala, because it would give us something to do. The children aren't allowed to skate on the streets, that's not legal, and I remember when the skate park first, the idea of it first came about and how excited my son was and the skates that we bought him, and I just think it's so important for this to be completed to get our kids a healthy, positive place to be. The way that it is now, just a few, it's not completed, a few kids can skate and it's not anything like the skate parks in the other communities, and hopefully this will happen for not just the children, but everyone in Kohala. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Dave, your next testifier?
Our next testifier is Todd Andrews, representing the people of Kohala, speaking in support of Resolution 433.
Good morning. I support the skate park. It's a good thing for the community. They've been waiting five years for it to get fixed and finish the second half on the rest of it. They could only make half of it in the beginning because of the financial thing, and it's a really good thing for the community. The, I've been mowing, donating my time mowing the construction area for the last five years, and so it's a good thing for it to go through and finally get it done. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's transition to, let's see, Oceanview. Do we have any testifiers there that showed up? Sandy?
Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have one testifier. We have Rick Abbott wanting to comment on 239 bills and 253, representing himself.
Okay, good morning Mr. Abbott. You have three minutes per item. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Aloha and good morning. My name is Richard Abbott, Oceanview, candidate for County Council District 6. First of all, I would like to reiterate what Mr. Olson said and extend my concerns as well as he covered it very well though. I would also like to commend the mayor and the council for their work and intent on Bill 253, an amendment to the county charter to extend the political appointment of the county clerk, the chief elections officer, to a six-year term. It's been widely acknowledged that the County of Hawaii needed stability and experience to improve the workings of the office, and that could extend to an efficiently-run election. However, as indicated by the studies of the prestigious Wisconsin Government Accountability Board and the Pew Charitable Trusts, quote, "Elected officials are more in favor of policies that are thought to promote turnout," end quote. Municipalities that have appointed officials have lower voter turnout and have lower purge rates. This phenomena is seen nationwide, but here in Hawaii, we have now sunk to the very bottom nationally of voter turnout. As with, as witnessed and documented yesterday island-wide in our newspapers, in this process, even the budget received little attention in testimony, so widespread is the apathy. Often the only testimony is out of anger and frustration. But in fact, citizen concern and involvement of an informed electorate is the keystone of a fair and functioning democracy. This legislative body assures the county provides the opportunity to witness and participate, yet has had to scrap for funds to allow video feeds of meetings, as if it is an afterthought or leftover from the budget process. Even what is provided is nearly every meeting interrupted by a loss of signal or audio or turned off if there is no direct testimony. Citizens have to drive many miles, taking time out of their busy schedules to view the public's business. This bill offers an opportunity to reverse direction and begin to climb back to respectability and public trust, if it is to be, if, this bill is amended to make the position elected and eliminate the political appointment. and eliminate the political appointment. I thereby employ the body to improve this proposal by making that change. Send it to the public for vote with the opportunity for a change in our county council, county charter to restore faith in our local democratic process in our council. Thank you very much. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Let's see, Donnie in Waimea, I'm not sure if, is there anyone there? We, oh, we couldn't hear you. No testimony, okay, thank you. All righty, we're going to transition back to Hilo. Donna Warden, thank you for being patient. You're our next testifier. You have two items. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I'm coming from a background of health. I have a public health degree, which the meaning of is that I've learned how to read scientific studies and apply them for the general health of a population, as distinct from a medical provider of various stripes who will deal one-on-one with an individual. I have a lot of background in research, and so I'm interested to hear the fire ant speakers say that the Parks and Rec Department perhaps doesn't have the expertise to do research on fire ants. But having been bitten by a couple at my new home, I realized that I could go to Home Depot and buy a $3 bag of granule that makes me feel quite safe from them, although it sold for $11 at the same bag at Orchidland Store. So it seems like a group purchase of such a thing could be a better use of those funds. And I realize that's a little bit off the subject. The main thing I want to speak about is something that I have not heard addressed ever, which is soap. And this is also building on some testimony of Ms. Hazel regarding bathrooms for the Millionaire's Pond.
County Council, Martha Bulli's office. Thank you.
Excuse me. Waimea, could you turn off your mic? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll reset your time.
And I'm not in Waimea. It's just gone up on the, no, I'm in Hilo.
We'll grant you extra time. Go ahead, Ms. Warden.
Anyway, then also, speaking about the White Sands Maukah, I'd like to piggyback on those comments as well. We do need these facilities for the public, but we also need to have less staff and strep that's been affecting both residents and visitors. I have not traveled terribly extensively, but certainly in other county parks, national parks in various states in the United States, I've never come across a situation where there's no soap to wash your hands. As put by Robert C. Miller, who is Biology Vice Chancellor at University of California, when bacteria comes in contact with soap, its cell wall explodes. We don't need special chemicals. All we need is some soap. Now, I've thought that perhaps various hotels might be willing to sponsor such a thing, but today, the two that I have signed up to speak about, one is the Parks and Rec wants to have $30,000 over the next five years for a telephone system. Now, I am sure they need one. However, also having been a purchasing agent for a large corporation, 350 employees, it seems strange that just a blanket amount is being put for that without research into is it the best system and is it a good cost? Speaking with people over the current VoIP technology is terrible. It's hard to understand people. It's not a quality phone system. So it really seems, speaking of research, that some might be done here, and perhaps there's some money left over for soap. As well, the other one I was speaking on is, again, it's kind of a blanket amount. And I'm just curious, you know, well, actually, I'm looking for education. I'm looking for, you know, a statement to us so that we're educated about what that money is going to go for and so we can give our comments on is that, is that the best use of our public monies by the Parks and Rec Department? And that's the 446. So please, so we understand what that's about, please let us know. And I appreciate the good testimony prepared by the White Sands Maukah's testifiers, and I pledge to come back with some facts and figures for you folks and give a more proper testimony on what it might take to get some soaps in our public restrooms in our county parks. And thank you for your time and attention.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Our next testifier here in Hilo is Fire Chief Darren Rosario.
Darren Rosario, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the appointment of Molly Stebbins to the Corporation Council. As Fire Chief, you're marking on Police Chief Kubujiri's statements earlier. I also had the opportunity to prepare a performance appraisal of Molly's work for the Fire Department, and you could pretty much mirror the comments made by Chief Kubujiri and our comments there. So in short, I just wanted to really show my strong support for this appointment. I believe that Mary Kinoi made an excellent choice throughout my whole past two and a half years as Fire Chief, working very closely with Molly. Her work ethic stands apart for me. She always strives to do the right thing and do it very promptly. I think you keep hearing that same thing over, that her work is completed in a very timely fashion. She has shown someone to have great integrity for me, always doing the right thing. We've had multiple conversations on items that involve the Fire Department, and she's been able to educate me on what is the right thing and the right path to go, although it may not be the easy path to take. Lastly, she's a great educator for me. Whenever she replies back to a question that we present to the Corporation Council's office, she also provides me where in the HRS I can find the reason for her opinion, and that causes me to do a lot of research in itself. I've never done so much reading as the Fire Chief to understand my role as I've done in the past two and a half years. There's a lot of education that I need to still do, but she generally has pointed me in the right direction. I've learned a lot from just reading the HRS as well as the county charter and such. Also, with her appointment comes Lorene Martin. She is a wonderful, great litigator. I've worked closely with her on a very arduous case that involved the Fire Department. Once again, her work ethic, her integrity was very, very much appreciated, and I am here to strongly offer my support for your recommendation and your approval of Mary Kinoi's appointment of Molly Stebbins to the office of the Corporation Council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Fire Chief. Okay, we have two more testifiers here in Hilo. Joyce Folena and Gregory Todd Smith, if you can please come forward to the table. Morning, Joyce. Good morning. You're testifying on two items, Bill 254 and 255. Yeah. When you're ready, you can hit the button on the bottom.
Good morning, Chair Yoshimoto, members of the council and the public. Last night was my earliest opportunity to watch the DVD of the Finance Committee of May 12th, and I was very disappointed in the reaction of this council concerning Bill 254. I very strongly support this bill, 254. I think the word redundancy was used or alluded to because this phrasing to public health, protect public health, safety and welfare was already in the charter, but I think it needs to be reiterated within the charter. And it does add the word responsibilities, does it not? Yes, it does. Okay. In my view, and in the view of quite a few of the people with whom I speak in my District 4 of Puna, Council District 4, this council has not, in certain times, done what we feel it should do to protect our public health and safety. We feel that this council has put politics and business at times above our public health and safety. Your records speak for themselves. So while we feel that you're probably going to kill this bill, I don't, I would wish you wouldn't. I would wish you would all revise your opinions of the bill and support Councilwoman Brenda Ford's Bill 254. I'm a realist. And it is nothing personal, Mr. Yoshimoto. We finally got to that point years ago. It's nothing personal. It's a difference of opinion here. I'm going to move to Bill 255. I feel an absolute support of Bill 255 also, because there are certain times when there are conflicts of interest. There are conflicts between the county council and the administration. And when these disputes arise, I don't see any way that Corporation Council can represent two sides at the same time. So I am in absolute support of this Bill 255, which allows the county to have private counsel in an instance where there would be conflict of interest on the part of Corporation Council trying to represent the legislative branch, which is the county council, COUNCIL, and the administration during a dispute between the two bodies of our county government. I praise Mrs. Ford for sticking to what she believes and to always hold her, her level of morality and integrity above special interests, above business, above politics. Thank you, Mrs. Ford, for everything you do, and when you leave office because of the term limit, you will be leaving in praise, and I hope you come back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Folena. Mr. Smith? Oh, there you are. Good morning, aloha.
Good morning, council. As far as the two bills that Joyce just came through, again, you know, ditto. Again, we are not talking as far as 254. We are not talking about putting the responsibility of the council, you know, like eliminating responsibility. We are talking about prioritizing in this bill. That's all it is, prioritizing. Because the one thing that I have noticed in the years that I've been here is that oftentimes it doesn't, you know, there is no direct pressure maybe from money, you know, there's no bribery changing hands. But the thing is that special interest, particularly moneyed special interest in our society, is really heavy on our political system, very heavy. And the point of the matter is that if we just prioritize, you know, like what is worth more than human life? You know? And the fact of the matter is that in the recent two really hot-button issues that we've gone through together in this, in our county government and our society, it seemed like money was far more important than human life. And that is what I feel that this Bill 254 is talking about, is human life. And everything you do in this county council involves with protecting the public against the excesses of a small group of our society. There are only two forms of government, one that benefits the small group, like we see today, where we have a, for instance, an economic gap that has never been seen in our country's history, ever, even in the worst times of the so-called Gilded Age of the late 1890s. And the fact is that money is now ruling our upper levels of government at the federal level. It's also ruling our state level. And the fact is that here at the county council is, in many cases, are only, the people's only true representation, you. And to prioritize with 254 would be very, very good in my mind. And I hope you change your positions on this. And as far as the other bill, again, I'm the son of attorney, and I kind of, to me, would be if this were private practice, you know, at least in my experience dealing with my dad. And I used to help him put up briefs, make up briefs. And the fact of the matter is that it's hard to serve two masters. And I mean, I think this would be a great tool for you folks at council, say, okay, if we have a real heavy difference of opinion between, you know, council and administration, hey, let the council have its own, because how can, you know, the attorney by nature wants to, you know, defend his client's position. That's the nature of the whole deal. So, you know, consequently, council, having the tool that they can hire their own council at times when they feel that they are, you know, that they are not being fairly represented by corp council would be invaluable to me. I certainly would want it in your position. All right, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, let's see. Other sites, just making sure we've covered all the public testimony. If there's any other site that has further testifiers, please let us know. If not, we're going to be starting with our agenda. Hearing none. Okay, I'll be closing public testimony. Mr. Clerk?